Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the May 13, 2019, regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments or participation are encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room if you'd like to speak on any items. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with the process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Willman to lead us in prayer and pledge allegiance. All rise.
Thank you, Chairman. We gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Willman. Next item is approval of the minutes for the following meetings. The City of Tampa Public Hearing from April 8, 2019, and the public hearing on Hillsborough County Amendments from April 8, 2019. Any questions or discussions concerning those minutes? Oh, thank you. Commissioner Dix just reminded me we should do the roll call. Thank you. Roll call, please. That would help.
Good afternoon. Powell. Dix. Green. Joseph. Kress. Marina.
Here.
Willman.
Here.
Thrower.
Here.
Wildes.
Here.
Dickerson. Rodriguez. Doughty.
Here.
Thank you of a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Now, for approving the minutes from the April 8, 2019, for the Temple Terrace and Hillsborough County Public Hearings. Any discussion? Someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Dix has made a motion. Commissioner Marina has seconded. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor of the minutes as stated say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. We are going to move on to item number two. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any items not on the agenda today, they can come forward. You have three minutes. Public comment? Okay. No public comment. We will move on to number three. Rick Richmond is our CAC appointee for the MPO. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Rick Richmond. Thank you. Rick Richmond, you're appointee for the MPO Citizen Advisory Committee for the Quarterly So recently, there's a couple of things that have changed with our group. One thing, staff had always presented meeting update to the MPO Board, and now, just recently, this last board meeting, Bill Roberts, our current chair, and every month after, will present the CAC update to the MPO Board. This way, if there's any additional questions or follow-up or additional context, you know, he'll be there to represent the group. The other thing, too, is out of a suggestion, was to hold an evening workshop, which was kind of a less formal agenda, an opportunity for everyone to get together and just kind of ask staff any questions, or maybe a specific topic that they can discuss and gather more information. This last one, the MPO Chair Les Miller was there, and he spoke for a little bit, and then we also asked him several questions. So we don't know if this will be a regular opportunity or frequency, but it's something that we just wanted to try right now. The other thing is the Boulevard concept. I don't know how familiar everybody is, but it was something that was on the It's Time Tampa Bay survey. Didn't really receive a lot of positive support, but there were members in our committee that think that maybe it's poorly understood or not well-known. Since then, we had a presentation from Josh Franks, who has kind of developed the concept. And after that, it was suggested that maybe we submit a formal request to study the concept. Maybe it's feasibility, something doable. And then the MPO agreed to do that and added to the work program. So the project, the planning work program. So that's what's happened recently. And then, just some updates on Tampa Bay next. The Howard Franklin Bridge is going to be starting construction in 2020 with the 2024 completion date. There are some illustrations and concepts of design for the bridge that are out there. There's going to be a bike ped path along there, too, with maybe some sales and shading for shade for people. The downtown, north of downtown, that's still in flux, which is Section 7 through Tampa and Seminole Heights. They have removed, or they're no longer pursuing, express lanes through there. But they're also, now I think they're weighing operational improvements, which have been suggested, but then also maybe a no-build option that will be coming forth. The last thing is the downtown interchange to West Shore and that interchange as well. There are some public workshops in the end of May, and then public hearings in early 2020 to discuss those projects. And then lastly, if you remember, I'm also appointed to the T-BARDA CAC, representing MPO CAC. And so there's been a couple of meetings and just some high-level discussion and ideas of what's been happening there. So legislation did pass some funding, some annual funding for T-BARDA, 2.5 million recently. So they're starting to add staff and planners accordingly to begin putting together some plans. One of the items for the restructuring of T-BARDA, they need to do a regional development plan for transit. That was started, and Oliver was a consultant, and it should be completed sometime next year. And then, coming out of the Regional Transit Feasibility Study was the BRT as the catalyst. And that was just recently awarded for a PD&E study to WSP USA. And then, for the next two years, I think the contract is for three years, but for two, two and a half years, they'll be doing the outreach and put together the alternatives in PD&E. So that's my update. Anybody have any questions or follow-up?
Okay, thank you, Rick. Commissioner Green?
Can I just add something? Thank you, Rick, for the update. There was something that Secretary Glenn mentioned at the MPO Board meeting the other day about possibility of adding two, did he call them temporary lanes or?
The north, south, north of downtown?
North of downtown.
Yes, I believe it's two general use.
General purpose, one use direction.
In each direction, and then the hardened shoulder in the middle, too, for, they're trying to coordinate, I think, with a BRT system or, you know, project in the future, but that's still not determined because T-BARDA, I think, or FART or whoever's going to end up doing that.
And the SCIS is still being developed, and it won't be finished until next spring? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Okay. And the, something Rick mentioned also about the Boulevard concept, which has significant land use implications in and of itself. I'm not sure if we're going to get a chance to address this with this body or not, but the Board, as we mentioned, did approve the, or did request, rather, that the MPO staff pursue a study to try to understand some of the initial feasibility for that, you know, for that concept. But I think we, you know, we as a body should take that up at some point also to try to understand it better, what it actually means, because it's not, you know, it's not just a Boulevard, it's a transit corridor, it's a development corridor. There's a lot of things sort of, you know, associated with this concept that I don't think people really, you know, really, really understand at this point, so.
I would absolutely agree that there are definitely land use implications to that project, and that's something that Beth and I, in the less than a week since that action happened with the MPO, have been talking about how to coordinate on this study so that we ensure that as part of this feasibility, we're looking at those land use implications. I think that we're still talking about exactly how soon that study would start from a work program standpoint, balancing also the transportation teams need to get the LRTP completed by November. So, but absolutely, we're looking at how we can coordinate and having this body weigh in, you know, in some workshops and some discussion sessions, kind of like we just had, I think would be really valuable as part of that process, if not in a more formal way as well.
Good.
Okay. Commissioner Doughty?
Yeah, just, can you refresh my memory, or Rich, or Melissa, or Trent, any of you? This Boulevard Concept Feasibility Study, where are you looking for the feasibility? Or where are they looking for the feasibility? Where's the study?
They're looking at north of downtown, up essentially to, I think, all the way to the apex, so of where 275 and 75 join. Now, I'm not sure whether or not exactly how, I mean, some of the feasibility would probably play into how each of those ends terminate, how it connects with the other existing facilities that are in those areas. So I think that's something that is probably on the table that needs to be explored as part of this.
Okay. The other thing, too, is, I think it's going to, the reason I bring this up is because there are a lot of decisions, it seems like the MPO Board has to make a lot of decisions based on some hard and fast time deadlines, let's say, because of federal requirements. And many of these, they do have land use implications, so I'm trying to figure out, so how do we, you know, as a planning commission, sort of, you know, try to understand what's going on relative to those decisions that have to be made, and whether or not we need to look at them, you know, any closer, let's say, so.
Well, specifically, as it relates to the Long Range Transportation Plan, this body will make a formal determination of consistency with the comprehensive plans probably in October before the MPO makes their final, has their final public hearing on the Long Range Transportation Plan in November. So part of the discussion today in the workshop was to, you know, start to vet out some of the issues with these different types of projects, as I said in there, you know, balance and weigh the different sides of some of these major projects. But ultimately, for example, as your staff, the planning commission staff, has provided to Ms. Alden a memo looking at all of the major projects that are being considered for the needs plan and how they relate to or the comprehensive plans inclusive of the community plans in the different jurisdictions. So we, we're looking at that at a staff level as one of the filters to their going from a big list of needs down to a narrow list of needs. So one filter is the comprehensive plan and the community plans, one will be the community outreach, and ultimately, we'll arrive at a priority list that would be a part of the plan that would come to you for a consistency determination in October.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Marina?
So, in order to study the Boulevard plan, is, are there certain products that now have to be delayed to get the Boulevard study done in time for the LRTP update?
The Boulevard study will not be done in time for the LRTP update. I believe the intention is that, that, I don't want to misspeak, but my understanding is that the, that segment of 275 will not be beyond what Rick just mentioned with the one general purpose lane in each direction, and the hardened shoulder. No other changes will be made to that segment in, or proposed in that segment for the, in the LRTP for 2045 at this time. Then we'll have the Boulevard study, and then ultimately, I guess that could amend the LRTP, or it could get folded into the 2050 LRTP, which we'll be doing in five years. So, yeah, I don't think it will, I mean, ultimately, I guess the feasibility, if it impacted some other road, would then require an amendment to the LRTP.
Thank you, Judge.
Sure. The downtown interchange would be one. I mean, I could see some of the, you know, crossing roads having some implications there, but I don't think that, I believe then we would just come back and amend the LRTP to make those changes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments to Rick? Thank you, Rick. We appreciate your update.
Thank you. Thanks.
We are going to move on to item number four. Jay Collins is going to do a presentation on the industrial lands data. I guess Jennifer.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. I'll start the presentation, and Jay will jump in as needed. The staff has been working on the ongoing industrial lands project. You might remember, we presented some data to you back in, at your November meeting. So it was a little bit ago, but we've been working on it. In the November meeting, staff only pulled data from the industrial categories specifically. In the city of Tampa, that was industrial, light industrial and heavy industrial. Plant City and Temple Terrace only have one industrial category called industrial, and then heavy industrial in Hillsborough County, light industrial, and then light industrial plant in the county. However, we wanted to really expand and broaden our analysis. There's a lot of other categories that allow industrial uses. In the city, that's your general mixed-use 24, your transitional mixed-use 24, and then you'll see throughout the analysis how many categories there are that do allow that industrial. First, in your packet, there is a map showing these future land use categories that allow industrial and where they're located. I'm going to put it on the Elmo. So it's a lot of information to take in, but as you can see, this, we've, each category has a, has a land use, each future land use category, and that's just showing everywhere that industrial could even be considered countywide. We see some in the county, it's that teal color that's in the rural area, that has a specific land use category. We see a lot of industrial in Plant City. Not a lot of categories in Tampa allow the industrial. We have some regional mixed-use 100 out by the airport, but will that feasibly have industrial uses on it one day? That's up for the market to decide. The next, we looked at the, how much is developable within these industrial areas? And so I'll show the next map. We consolidated them into one color to show where all of the industrial categories are. And so that map is on the Elmo. The land that's available to be developed is the red, and then if it's already been developed, it's that gray color. That just represents all the future land use categories that allow consideration of industrial, just put into one category. And then if there's developable underneath it, it is red. So you can kind of see Plant City has a fair amount of red, Tampa doesn't really have much red, and there's a little bit in the county that is developable. And then that map also has some data on it, which I consolidated into, for each of the jurisdictions, which I consolidated into charts on the PowerPoint. We see the total amount on your PowerPoint of the future land use categories that allow industrial consideration is that gray color, and then the amount of industrial is that purple color. So in the, in Hillsborough County, which is the first chart, the suburban mixed-use six, there's a lot of suburban mixed-use six in the county, and a fair amount of it isn't, is developable. But we're not really sure if that will be utilized for those industrial uses. This is just telling us that it, there's that possibility, and this is what's available. You'll see the light industrial, there's not, there's this much light industrial, but only this much developable. So not that much developable light industrial is left in the county. It's kind of going, going down. In the city of Tampa, we don't have much developable at all. There's very little, the city's pretty much just doing infill and tearing down and rebuilding. There's not a lot of that raw land in the city. We have a lot of that heavy industrial, but not that much of it is available to be developed. Our general mixed-use 24 allows industrial uses. That is a category that we see mostly in the north Hyde Park area, west Tampa, it's being heavily revitalized right now. Those aren't shifting away from industrial uses, even though the future land use category allows it. In Temple Terrace, their urban mixed-use 20 allows industrial uses. There's only a little bit left of it that is, that is developable, community mixed-use 12, there's a fair amount that is developable that would allow those industrial uses, as well as their, and then they have their industrial category, but that's pretty much all used up. The Temple Terrace does always have that possibility to annex and to keep on increasing their industrial land. And then last, we have Plant City, that only has two categories that allow industrial consideration, that is industrial, and then mixed-use residential, commercial, and industrial, but that has a 1,000-acre minimum. If you have any questions about that category, Jay could probably answer those better than I can, but there is a fair amount of developable left in that category, but again, you have that 1,000-acre minimum on that. So now we're going to look at how these lands are being utilized, and we did that by pulling the existing land use layer from the property appraiser. So I'll have Jay put the map on the Elmo. And it, once again, it's a lot of data to take in, which is why I have some pie charts later, but that's just showing, how are these lands being used? We looked at a couple of different categories. The green is agriculture. The blue...
Is public.
The red is light industrial, dark, dark black is heavy industrial. So, and those are taken from the property appraiser, just giving us a little bit of an idea of what's going on out there on the ground. And then we took that and further broke it down into what is developable. And so the red is showing us what's developable with these, with these future land use categories that are utilizing your ELU in a certain way. I've taken that and put it into pie charts for you, which is on your PowerPoint. In the city of Tampa, quite a, quite a chunk of it is going towards public, quasi-public and institutional uses, as well as light industrial uses, and there's not that much vacant in the city of Tampa, just about 11%. Under 1% of it is going towards agriculture in Tampa. In Hillsborough County, we have about 21% going towards agriculture. Mining is about 3% of that. It'll, you'll see it right on the map, it kind of pops out, but it's not much of the whole. And then in Plant City and Temple Terrace, a lot of those industrial ELUs are agriculture And then the light industrial takes up more of that, more of those uses, more of the existing land use categories are falling into that. Their uses are more light industrial-based rather than that heavy industrial. So your other map series shows where they're located in relation to the coastal high hazard area, the Port Activity Center. We did, that is one reason why we pulled the public, quasi-public institutional, is because we wanted to look at port-owned property and how that is utilizing industrial. It's also dependent on water and the urban service area. And I would just say, and this came up last time, that the Plant City is annexing lands for industrial uses. Last time, I showed you guys a lot of plan amendment data, and Plant City had the most, plan amendments going to industrial because they've been annexing, and their acreage is slowly creeping up. So next steps, we will continue to refine this data. It's a lot at one time, on a Monday afternoon, but we will also, staff can also work on some industrial policy best practices, look at how other municipalities are, how their policy direction is guiding them to take into consideration these industrial lands. Where will industrial be 10 years from now? It probably won't be in the same respect that the comprehensive plan is laying it out for us today, as well as, and we might hopefully bring back some policy recommendations from that. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jennifer, I was going to ask you about industrial, industrial areas that are transitioning, and I noticed there was a category on one of your maps that talked about, that says transitional use.
Yes.
24, whatever. Does, what does that assume in terms of transition?
Yes. So the transitional use 24 is a category that the cities had, I think, all the way back to our first comprehensive plan. It was placed in areas that didn't have a defined pattern, and it had, they had really developed mostly before we had planning. So they just kind of allow everything under the sun. A lot of our plan amendments, the last couple of cycles, Jay Collins has been presenting some, and Jay, please let me know if you would like to add, he's been presenting some transitional use 24 amendments. Staff has been looking at that category and trying to refine it and bringing amendments before this board and in front of Tampa City Council in areas where we might have a school that has a transitional use 24, future land use category. You had two of those last cycle. We're look, like, we're looking at refining that future land use category underneath it. In areas where the transitional use 24, we're seeing that the pattern has been transitioning to heavy industrial or light industrial, we've been tackling those areas as well.
Okay. Have you seen a transition also where other types of uses are moving into industrial areas? Housing specifically? Or people wanting to build housing in industrial areas? Because right now, that's not permitted, right?
Well, yes. In the city of Tampa, I can speak that heavy industrial and light industrial, future land use categories don't allow any residential whatsoever. But if you have the category of transitional use 24 or general mixed-use 24 in the city of Tampa, that allows up to light industrial, or I'm sorry, industrial general zoning, and you could also build a house in those areas. That's what I mean by it's everything under the sun, if you have that generalized future land use.
So it's a permitted use, then?
In those future land use categories.
Okay.
Yes, but not in the light industrial, future land use category, or the heavy industrial, future land use category.
Okay.
And I'll let Jay chime in for the other municipalities.
Well, I was actually just going to go ahead and put one other point on top of that, and we're going to have that conversation tonight in the public hearings, but the city of Tampa has made a concerned effort to actually look at some of its categories, its mixed-use categories, and promote those mixed-use categories. We used to have something in the city called heavy commercial 24, and that's now community commercial 35. They raised the densities and they raised the intensities. They did not do that with transitional use 24 or general mixed-use 24. So those are actually categories that the city of Tampa still says are areas that are transitioning, are areas that they need further refinement to move on to that next level. And part of that, you do see through some plan amendments that have occurred in the city of Tampa, such as what is now called North Hyde Park and West End in that area. such as what is now called North Hyde Park and West End in that area. Cypress, Rome, Cass. A lot of that used to have general mixed-use 24, which allows industrial general. It allows light industrial uses. Some of that general mixed-use 24 is still there today, and there are still some warehouses that are there. What's right next to them? Community Commercial 35 in mid-rise apartment blocks.
Right.
So you can see where that is one area where there has been a transition away from some of those heavy intensive commercial uses or industrial uses into those uses that are more transit-friendly uses as well as redevelopment options that the city would actually like to see out of some of its neighborhoods.
Okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Jay Collins calling Commissioner Staff.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I remember when this came up in November, and it was like my second meeting. And we were asking, maybe you were as well, about the number of potential sites throughout the county, not just within the city of Tampa. And through the maps that you're, that you have here, it seems to me that, just throughout the whole county, like really the only areas where we have potential for new development industrial in any sort of concentrated spaces are in areas that are currently, you know, like agricultural right now. And we only have so much agricultural land, you know, left. And I'm curious if there's been any thought or discussions on, like, proposed, like, tax amendments to where we can, you know, or we as, you know, planning commission or developer, someone can, you know, other areas that are, you know, within Tampa that we, that they can allow, you know, add in that language, so that way we don't have to continue to take up all of our agricultural land and then just, you know, furthering potential urban sprawl.
I, yes. So the agriculture that is an existing land use. And so we've placed that existing land use of agriculture kind of on top of the future land use categories that'll allow industrial consideration. That is something that we could certainly look into as staff. If you would like us to research tax amendments and how to make that, can you just, how to make that transition to industrial? Is that what you're interested in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just curious if that's something that's, you know, if anyone's been bringing that forward as, hey, you know, we'd like to do that, but since these are our areas where we can only focus on and we don't want to do something all the way in Dover or, you know, or way down in South County, want to do something, like a unique project somewhere in the city of Tampa, but there's nothing that's currently available, you know, can we help facilitate that?
Okay. And I'll let Melissa...
Yeah, I was just going to add that some of the green that's on the map showing up as agricultural role in South County, for example, is already entitled for residential development. That's part of the difficulty with some of the mixed-use categories is that they, they may allow industrial, but they're not entitled that way. So I think absolutely that the direction that you just gave, as well as some of the direction we heard in November about trying to preserve the industrial that we have in the right areas, that not, sometimes we have plan amendments that are going from industrial to something else in the city of Tampa that are for, you know, essentially single-family lots. And they're being treated exactly, they have the same policies in the comp plan about that as they do about something that's in the Port Activity Center, for example. And maybe there's some distinguishing factors between some of these things that we could add some more nuance to our policies. And I think the idea about how we could incentivize some of it to happen is a great idea, too.
Okay. Commissioner Diggs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Jennifer, you and Jay did a very fine presentation on a very comprehensive project. So please don't take this as being criticism, but I want to make a suggestion. And then I want to follow up with something that Melissa said. You know, we get this packet every month to prepare for the, for the planning commission. And I use, like many of the commissioners use, I use an iPad. So I have all the maps that you had. And they're nice and color-coded, et cetera. And I endeavored over the weekend to really try to get an understanding of it. I don't have any of your PowerPoint presentation in my presentation on your section. And likewise, on your PowerPoint presentation, while I'm trying to follow there, I don't have any maps. So you say, here we are, and now let me refer to the Elmo. And I got to go here, there, wait, where? I had made some notes on one of these maps. Is that the map she's talking about? So, yeah, I'm going back and forth, and it's really kind of difficult for me to follow. So I just want to kind of say, if you could maybe consolidate all of that, that'd be good. And it'd be a lot easier for you, so you don't have to go from one, you know, communication device to another communication device.
Absolutely. Next time, I will present the charts in the packet. I apologize.
No, no, no reason to apologize. I just wanted to give you the feedback. The other thing, what I'd like to see, and it's really kind of a follow-up to what Melissa was saying, is that so much of the property that's been identified in the county for industrial is not necessarily going to be designated or set aside for industrial. Now, I don't know if that's good or bad. I don't know, quick example, for, you know, Plant City, which I'm obviously infinitely familiar with. You know, a big portion of the land in Plant City that is being identified as industrial is really mining. And in fact, it's mining which probably is never going to be touched because there was some weird stuff that happened to, you know, a little piece of it. So that kind of, you know, paints everything. So is there enough property in the county that is set aside for the county that we want to develop with our Vision 25, you know, program, et cetera? Do we want a, do we want a county that's going to have, you know, a preponderance of the land, 25, 30% being industrial? Is that the kind of community we want to develop? Or do we want 10% or 15%? I don't know what that number is. But I'd kind of like to get a feel for that before I start honing in and saying, okay, we want to set aside this property or that property, et cetera.
Absolutely. And that is something we've discussed as staff. What is the, and that's probably something that'll come out of that best practices. What is the right amount? And that is an answer that we will hopefully continue to hone in on.
Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Chris?
Yeah, just, I guess, kind of building on what the last two commissioners have commented on. This is really helpful. And unfortunately, I did miss the November meeting. But as we're making kind of parcel-by-parcel decisions, it's good to have an overall picture of how much demand there's going to be. And that maybe there's an economic development, you know, agency you can work with to help give you some forecasts. It sounds like you're already kind of on that path, so.
On the way.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Any other question? Commissioner Green?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask that same, that same question. Since we know there, you know, there are industrial areas that are transitioning in certain areas, be it the city or the county, and there are areas that want to be preserved, you know, you know, is the EDC actually focusing on or targeting any of those areas? Or anybody else for industrial, industrial development, let's say? I mean, in other words, are we, are we headed down the right path in terms of saying, here's where we need to preserve industrial lands? Here where we, you know, if it's transitioning already, just let it, let it happen? Because, you know, the market forces are, you know, are determining that, so.
Right. And I will say too, that, and I know that we have a couple, but that is where it gets a little tricky looking at every future land use category that allows industrial consideration. Because when I came to you in November, we were only looking at what we had that was designated industrial, future land use. So those properties would be industrial uses unless they went away, unless they were changed through a map amendment. But we will continue to work with, trying to find which sites are mostly competitive for industrial, which should be preserved. And I'll let Jay.
And just to add on to that, the county's key economic spaces does look into industrial availability. And we just had that conversation in the workshop that actually did look at that. Also, Mark is not here, but Jake Austin with Plant City's Economic Development also is very active along County Line Road and some of the other areas, and therefore Plant City's industrial uses.
Okay. Commissioner Chris?
Just one other small suggestion that would help me. I'm a visual person, is when you give the different categories, maybe you could link us to or include an image of what's the difference between heavy industrial and light industrial, you know, all those other categories would be helpful.
Yeah. And I do have, at least for the existing land use categories, because those have the similar names for the property appraiser data, so I do have a list, if anyone's interested. What uses are exactly allowed under heavy industrial? Or what, how the property appraiser looks at a use and says, is this heavy industrial or light industrial? And those DOR codes. And so that is available. I can pass it on to Melissa, and she can distribute. If you're interested in what are the public uses? What are the light industrial uses for the heavy industrial uses? As well as, I'm sure we can pull language from the comprehensive plan on the vision for these areas.
Commissioner Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But to keep on with the theme that's been going here, the scale of these maps is such that it's kind of hard to see. But in addition to finding out and trying to see what percentage of the county is the appropriate percentage to be industrial for what the needs of the growth or projected growth are going to be, I think some, some analysis of the general size of the parcels that are needed in order to maintain that. Because, you know, there probably are a smattering of these parcels that are in these maps that are too small to be able to handle anything like, you know, that's suitable for industrial and really should transition to something else. Because reserving them for an industrial use isn't, isn't going to serve any purpose, so. Just to add to your work.
Yeah.
Commissioner Green?
And then one last comment. Of course, Mitch, as you well know, we have the reverse situation out at the airport. Because air cargo has picked up so much that now there's, there's a need for more industrial uses around the airport for that very, that very reason. So we're sort of back and forth, I guess, in different parts of the county in that respect, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation.
Next up, Pedro is going to present a presentation on an unincorporated Hillsborough County community plans overview.
Pedro Par, Planning Commission Staff. I've been asked to give you an overview of unincorporated counties' community-based plans. So in the comprehensive plan, in the livable communities element, these are referred to as community and special area studies. They're designed to be extensions and refinements of the comprehensive plan, which is a broader base. They're designed to then look at it, take a little closer at certain, specific areas to discuss especially unique characteristics in those areas, the issues and problems, and to provide strategies for solutions that can guide that area into the future. They also then portray that vision that the community wants for the future development, and they can impact zoning decisions. So in 1998, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners established the community-based planning program, and we started. In 2001, we formed a joint team approach. It was, that included the Planning Commission staff and then, the then Planning and Growth Management Department and Office of Community Neighborhood Relations in the county. The reason that these plans were put forward is because at the time, there were, there were citizens who were always turning up at the zoning hearings, who were unhappy that they weren't having a say until really far into the discussion of what could be done on the site. So they felt their involvement was late in the development review process. Also, the comprehensive plan is not specific. It's not designed to be specific to neighborhoods or communities. It's designed to give an overall vision of the county. And so the comprehensive plan provides a broad policy basis for the community plan. So we just turned around and started looking at how the broad base could be emphasized and further developed with the community plan. So what it does is, again, is it recognizes the unique, what is unique about each community. It gives them a chance to say what parts of their history they want to hold. It creates plans with a greater level of detail because they can look at specific issues, specific roadways, facilities, those natural resources in their community that are important to them. It ensures that the neighborhoods have a direct involvement in the creation of these plans because of the process. I'm going to talk about that process. And then it helps to create the community identity in a multitude of ways, specifically through public participation and bringing these large number of people together and so they have a common idea of what it is that's being discussed in their, in their community plans. It identifies, the intention was that they identify their community's priorities, that they do so through a set of goals and strategies, that it worked to resolve existing conflicts within the community. That, here was one that I thought was really important, that these tools I saw is, I've been involved in the community planning process since 1998. What we found is as an educational tool, it brought all of the different branches of government to those communities to talk about specific issues that really had nothing to do with what we were doing, but provided a basis for citizens to become further involved in the decision-making of local government. And it's also then used to take as an instrument to, for example, the CIP, the Capital Improvement Process, and act as a leverage of different resources. So it was, they're designed not to just use public monies, but public-private partnerships where there's a common understanding of where the community wants to go. So I'm going to walk you through, there have been 22 adopted plans and five plan updates. The livable communities element of the comprehensive plan was put into the comprehensive plan in 2008. And then we adopted at a staff level, a community planning guide that was to act as a guide for any further community plans that were being developed, so that there'd be a common basis and for those plans. So in 2001, if you look at your map, there, you can see that in 2001, Lutz, Keystone Odessa in the northwest area, and the university area, and the Brandon Main Street were developed and adopted. Then in 2003, we had Citrus Park Village and the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. In 2004, the Noda Sasa came in. In 2005, Town and Country, Apollo Beach, Riverview, and Ruskin. So you can see that we were working in different areas of the county, but also that we're starting to get a larger picture of what's happening in the county, especially with various communities. And then in 2007, Gibsonton, then the Wyomoma Village came in. In 2008, we did the Greater Palm River area. And then in 2009, the East Lake Orient Park community plan. In 2010, we did the Little Manatee South, the Greater Sun City Center area, the Seppner Bango, and the Greater Brandon area. In 2011, the Greater Carrollwood Northdale and the Northwest Area update. So we began doing updates to the plan and the Lutz update. In 2013, we did the, we developed and adopted the Palm community plan, but we also updated then the university area and the Keystone Odessa plans. And in 2015, which was the last plan that we've done, we came in and we updated the South Shore Area Systems Plan, which there were eight different community plans that had taken place from the initial plan to the, to the update of that plan. And we then looked at how those were consistent with one another. And so we set, we hope we set a framework for some of the planning that's going to take place now and in the immediate future. What I provided for you as a handout was a timeline of those different plans. Again, if any of you have any questions about any of those plans, I can probably locate and provide you a summary of those online on our website, the planhillsborough.org. If you put in community plans for the unincorporated county, what you'll see is you'll come up to a place where you can click on it and go to the livable communities element. But on that face page, you'll see an outline of the goals and strategies that are, that were adopted in each community plan. Again, in 2008, we brought those adopted plans into one place in the comprehensive plan for the county, the livable communities element. From that, I'm going to move to what that process was. So all of these community plans included these three phases. Taking stock, we had open houses. We introduced what planning was. We talked about existing conditions. We brought in experts that the participants wanted to see. And we provided a set of exercises that helped us look at and, and understand the issues that were going on. We did a visioning, envisioning the future process. So the boundaries that were adopted came from a discussion of those people who were involved and participated in the community planning. They're not tied to ZIP code. They're not tied to TAZ, Transportation Area Zone. There are actually boundaries that people who participated said this is their community. And we then, we developed the different themes for the plan, the vision, and we developed the goals and strategies. And then to document the plan, we did the refinements that were necessary to bring it down to a document that could be adopted. We did an open house, and then we went through the adoption process. Those portions of the community plans that were brought into the community plan and created the community plan boundary that was, that was adopted, the vision statement, if there was a concept map, the concept maps, and the goals and strategies. The planning processes itself always included in a advisory committee, but it could also include a facilitator brought from the outside as a consultant. It included professional staffs from various agencies and from our agency and from the Planning and Growth Manager Development Services. It could also, and it, sometimes it did include a consultant team of various people. So what the community participation drivers were not is that this was, this is a process that's not designed by leaders, you know, the elected officials, appointed officials going out and saying, this is what we want, bringing an expert to... going out and saying, "This is what we want," bringing an expert to back that up, and then going out to stakeholders and saying, "Here's what you're going to get," or "Here's what we see." Instead, it was designed around a bottom-up process, instead of a top-down, a bottom-up where the stakeholders came together, as I described, and they raised issues. We did different kinds of exercises to get to what those issues were and what they meant. Then, we brought in experts to address those different issues and those different discussions. And then, that plan was formalized, drafted, and brought back to the adoption process. So, what is meaningful citizen's participation in the sense of community plans? Our intention was that it was a shared decision-making, a consensus-building process where not everybody had to agree, but if we couldn't get to an agreement that was pretty commonly held, we set it aside, and we left it. We said that in the public hearing process, those people who still thought that was important could step up and tell elected officials or the appointed officials that they felt it was important, and since the final authority of the adoption of the community plan was the board, they could, or they could then incorporate it into staff's recommendations as well. So, some of the public participation tools, we, all meetings were public and noticed, whether they were workshops or open house meetings. We, again, identified a broad stakeholder group, so when we got there, we started asking, "Who's here? Who's important to your community? Who should we bring in that's not on our list?" But we were trying to come up with a, with a pretty broad list of people we thought should be involved first. So, then we formed the advisory committee. That committee was really kind of figurative because anybody who came in, no matter what form, still had a right to come in and say, and to provide comments that ended up in the document. The decision-making was, again, by consensus, not by vote, and the adoption was through a plan amendment process. So, we noticed all property owners within the boundary. We encouraged articles, newsletters, and press releases. We used our website as an interactive website. People could read what we were doing. In many cases, they could actually go and hear the actual transcript of what was happening. We recorded many of those. We provided the handouts and things so they could go in and look, and they could call staff. We did an intensive email notice. We use the email notice as a skeleton, provide all notices. Anytime somebody came in, we would notice the next meeting from an email list, and they stayed on until they told us they didn't want to be on it anymore. We posted signs for the open houses, and we did presentations to get participation from, again, various groups, and I just gave you an example of what some of those groups were. The adoption process was Planning Commission workshop, Board of County Commissioners workshop, Planning Commission public hearing, Board of County Commissioners public hearing before transmittal, and then the final BOC, public hearing adoption. So, I was going to talk a little bit about the implementation. So, we get these documents, they come in, and so how are they implemented? Well, the comprehensive approach to this implementation included the coordination that we were doing as we developed, and then coordination with different programs that could actually implement them, whether they were public or private. So, we didn't just address the aesthetics, the gateways, and things. We could actually provide data that could be used to coordinate facility and infrastructure. We explored alternative funding strategies. So, again, public-private partnerships, private partnerships, and we also talked about that the community had ownership of these projects. These were not something that the county was going to go out and do just because it was an adopted plan. Their responsibility was to take the document and to use it actively and to carry it through after its adoption. The framework for implementation, again, for, within the comprehensive plans, you have the comprehensive plan, we had the plan boundaries, the vision, the concept map, and the goals and strategies, but many of these also had land development code, where standards and regulations were developed around these plans, or many of them had places where the land development code was a standard by which they were going to be implemented, that exist in various forms in the existing code. And then, the capital improvement program for infrastructure. What we were trying to do is, we were trying to get the buy-in of all of the different entities, and so to do that, I'm going to, I'm going to go real quickly. We, staff developed, staff worked with a consultant and developed a community planning guide, and that planning guide broke down what the different components were in black and white that people could pick up and look at, and it was a set standard from here forward. So, they talked about, for example, the planning agency roles, the stakeholder participation roles, the organization necessary, what the new plans needed to include it, and how that update would take place. It defined, it provided a definition of the planning agency and the team, and team, project team roles. It talked about what the framework was and what the process was and how it should be carried forward, but it is really important, I think, is to introduce an action plan, and that's the implementation component. It created standards for the community plan, noticing recommendations, and document itself. It said that these things must be done, there must be a means and timing for public notice, there must be structured goals and strategies and statements, there must be that action plan, which I'm going to talk about in a second. There must be information and statements that actually held that community and gave a clear vision and intention of what it was to do, and then it was adopted in a comp plan. And so, here was the action plan component. So, in order to get these to the public hearing process with the Board of County Commissioners, one of the things that we worked at was that they had to be feasible, and they had to, they had to be something that the different departments had looked at and said, "Yes, they were implementable." So, what that did is it created, it helped to create and manage the citizen expectations about what actually could be addressed, what was, what was the feasibility of addressing the different components. But it also empowered the community groups to implement their plan because they now had an understanding of exactly who might implement that plan and who they needed to go talk to and what that relationship needed to be.
And I think there, I'm at the end of it. Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In one of your slides, it mentioned Chapter Six, Plan Update, and I don't know if, I think that, I had asked this before about what it took, you know, to get plans updated, and I apologize, this is going to make things like duplicative, but what, do we have anything set in stone when these were done, these initial community plans, where, hey, we need to have these like updated, you know, every so often? And I ask that because, like, the NAR statistic on the average time that someone's going to be, like, in a particular area or home, leading up to, like, nineteen, from nineteen eighty-five to two thousand and eight, it's about six years. And then, it's been a little bit further. People have been staying in their homes since then due to, you know, the crash, you know, and the recession. It's been like about seven to nine years. But when a lot of these community plans were done, you know, just looking at them, two thousand and one, and so on, you know, there's so many, there's only five that's been updated, and of those five, four of them were, you know, from two thousand and one. So, it's like a really long time to me, where the people who originally were, maybe were a part of the process in developing these plans, they're no longer in the area. So.
I think in about two thousand and one, we agreed that the timeframe should be about ten years. In two thousand and eleven, which was the last year, we set, we set up a program. We did, there was an invitation to start updating them, but again, we, we had the drop in the economy, and then there've been some changes. So, the last one we actually did was this South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan in 2015, but the opportunity there is there to go back and update them, and it was a ten-year timeframe.
That's a ten-year, okay.
That's, the intention is that these are sort of a little shorter range than the long-range comprehensive plan, so the horizon was, as Pedro said, always envisioned to be about ten years. And something we've been, I've been having some discussions with the county is about potentially how we move forward with beginning to update some, the original goal had been to perhaps update the overall comp plan first, and then start to, once again, align the community plans with that. But there's certainly some demand in some of these communities that are feeling some different pressures than they were when they were originally adopted those community plans, and so perhaps the need to get out there and address some of that sooner. So, that's something we're in ongoing discussions with the county administration about how to best approach and balance the need to update the overall comprehensive plan with each of these community plans, too.
So, is it where the county or the planning commission says, "Hey, we're going to update," or is that like, kind of like the spark, or is it where the community needs to come in and say, "Hey, we want it to be done"? Like?
It's happened from both directions, or all directions. In the past, there used to be a, every two years, I think it was, a community planning work program that was done. When, that's how it was done in the two thousands. There was a work program brought to the Board of County Commissioners. They blessed, these were the next ones in line to get a community plan. I think since the program has not been active for a little while, again, it would be good to potentially get some direction on where we restart because there's a lot of needs, and we probably can't do them all at the same time. So, something akin to that kind of work program would probably be useful to get the community, the board's blessing on, this is where we should start next.
I'll volunteer if you need.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pedro, thank you for the presentation. I just have one quick question. Special area plans or special area studies you refer to in here, what?
The livable communities element references special area studies, so some of these were small. They were six thousand acres, some of them were twenty thousand. So, for example, Brandon Main Street was probably a special area study. So, the focus area in the Northwest Plan, again, that's probably a special study area. But we could also do special study areas that were specific, maybe existed in a community plan but had an industrial or an economic development kind of thing. We could go back and do that as a special study, too.
Okay, so it just overlaps where it needs to? Okay, good. All right.
And I would just mention that, or clarify, I said that the program was dormant, but I would say, actually, we've continued to do special area studies. They've just been different than these big community plans that are twenty thousand acres. We've looked at things like the Brandon area corridors study that more specifically drilled down on their community plan. Pedro just recently finished the Fowler Avenue study that looked at that corridor that transcends both the university area community plan, but also areas in the city of Tampa and Temple Terrace. So, we've just sort of taken a more closer-in look at some of these areas, particularly looking at sort of the transportation and land use relationship in some of those recent studies. But, so we've still been active in looking at these special areas and these community plans. It's just been a little different, and I think that potentially informs how we go forward with community plans because we've learned a lot through something like the Brandon study about the, the level of granularity that maybe we need to look at some of these areas and hone in really on the areas where people want to see the growth, as opposed to, in the past, and sometimes they were a little bit more reactive, saying, "No, we don't," they told us very clearly in a number of the community plans what they don't want, but maybe there's an opportunity to reframe them in a little more positive, what do they want and where.
Okay. I wasn't clear about what you were referring to, special area studies, but I fully understand. So, does that suggest, then, that we'll probably see more special area studies or plans relative to updates for the community plans? Is that? I don't know. I'm just speculating.
Well, I do think that that's what we've been hearing from our local government partners is that one of the ways that we can continue to hone our work is different types of special area studies. I don't know that they're all community plans, but sometimes they're things like Mark and Jay have been working on State Road Thirty-Nine, south of Plant City, looking at that for the city of Plant City. We hope to be continuing to work with Hart and City of Tampa on transit-oriented development, stationary area planning. So, I think special area studies in a number of different forms are something that we're going to be continuing to do more of.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Criss?
I guess with that theme, I wondered what, where does this Ebor City, is it a master plan, a vision plan? How does that fit into this process?
That was a request by the Community Redevelopment Agency for us to act as a consultant representative. So, we, they provided some monies. We entered into an agreement that you approved, and it's not really a special area study, it's an update to this community redevelopment area plan. No, it's more tied to the Community Redevelopment Agency that's in place, and its vision and mission for Ebor City.
And I would just mention that the city of Tampa has a little bit different approach to community and neighborhood plans, and at a future meeting, we're going to be asking David Haye and Michelle Ogilvy to give a presentation about that. It probably will be the August meeting.
Commissioner Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm confused. If we're going towards more special area studies, are the special area studies superseding information in the comp plan? Are they supposedly doing enhanced work within what's in the comp? I mean, I'm, what I'm really struggling with is how, I mean, we've adopted comp plans, and they say specific things, and certain things are supposed to be or not, as you pointed out. "We don't want" was more of what we got than what we do want. How does what wasn't wanted twenty years ago going to be dealt with if we're, if we're not updating community plans, but we're doing special studies? How?
I think ultimately, they would result in changes to the comprehensive plan or to the community plan. So, I'll use Brandon as an example. So, the Brandon, the Brandon East-West Corridor Study, actually, most of what came out of that fit in the Brandon community plan. It aligned with the community plan. So, it didn't, because Brandon called for having urban-level growth in certain areas, what it identified was some potential policies that we might want to have in the entire comprehensive plan, a better approach to how we deal with activity centers than what we have in the comprehensive plan today. So, we have that body of work there to inform updating the comprehensive plan. That study could have resulted in something that said, "Oh, wow, this is a very different result from the community than what the community plan said," and then would have given us a body of work that would have needed to update the community plan. So, I think each one sort of, the outcomes are not, we're not sure what they are entirely until we go out and engage the community and see how much the direction that was, occurred in two thousand and three, in some cases, is still the direction they want or not. And every one is so unique that I don't know that we can predict.
No, and I, I agree.
Yeah, what the outcome will be.
I'm kind of going with the thought, we haven't seen it yet, but we haven't seen plan amendments that come in that really are distinctly contrary to a community plan. But I can imagine it, okay? Just in having sat here for a while, so, and I can imagine if something's twenty years old, that there would be a really good reason for, you know, an amendment to come before that makes perfect sense, but it's contrary to what's adopted.
Right.
So, I'm trying to at least keep us all cognizant of the fact that it being dormant, and it being that only five of all of these things have been updated since two thousand and one, that there's a potential problem brewing.
Yeah, some of what I've discussed with the county staff has been looking at the areas where we anticipate from our population projections and allocation, some of the growth going and therefore changing the character of the area, focusing on the community plans that are in those areas. We probably don't need to focus on some of the areas that are more stable and probably aren't in, in the path of change, at least in the short term. So, I think we'd be happy, as this conversation evolves, and certainly if there's a work program that develops, we would be sharing that with you all, and, but that's the prioritization that we see. We're seeing where, you know, the development is going, where we're seeing the rezonings, the different, the different applications, and where we're going to need growth potentially to go in the future, and where that, I mean, we know where it's going to collide, and that's where we need to get out and start to talk to people.
Kind of like it back to the workshop we were having before this. Kind of link it back to the workshop we were having before this also, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, any other commissioners? Thank you. We are going to move on to City of Temple Terrace Plan Amendment 19-01.
Good afternoon, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission Staff. The Planning Commission is processing one plan amendment for the city of Temple Terrace, TTCPA 1901. This shows you the location of that plan amendment. For those of you familiar with Temple Terrace, it's a couple blocks from their city hall, located on North 52nd Street. 52nd Street, you may know, is actually the jurisdictional boundary between Tampa and Temple Terrace. So, when we're doing our analysis, we won't only be looking at how it impacts Temple Terrace but also the city of Tampa. This is the parcel of property that is affected. Currently on this parcel, there is a multifamily apartment unit and a vacant lot. You can see by this arrow that north of that is a public supermarket. To the east and to the south are offices in Temple Terrace and to the west is an apartment complex and a couple of single-family homes in the city of Tampa. So, what is this plan amendment all about? It was privately initiated, at small scale, at only 1.72 acres. The applicant wishes to go from its current land use, which is office institutional, to residential 18, primarily because he wants to give a facelift to the existing multifamily units there and also to expand that multifamily use to the vacant lot to the south. This shows you the land use map as it stands today. The red color to the north is the commercial activity center in Temple Terrace that encompasses the public shopping center. The crimson cover color is the office institutional in Temple Terrace, which not only includes this plan amendment area, but also those areas to the east and the south, which are also offices to a small, that are of relatively small scale. Across the street is two single-family homes in Tampa, but they do have a residential 35 land use category and there's also an apartment complex which you see, which is the darker brown color of the two, and that is residential 50 in the city of Tampa. If this plan amendment was approved by Temple Terrace City Council, the crimson color would change to the brown color to represent the residential 18 of Temple Terrace. What would be the impacts currently, under its current land use, it's allowed to have 15 dwelling units and 37,000 square feet of office and institutional uses. That would increase to 30 units and however the entitlements for office and commercial uses would decrease to 26,000 square feet because it is, this land use category is more primarily envisioned for residential development. I will say it's also a quarter of a mile south of Fowler Avenue, which is in the Temple Terrace Conference of Plan is recognized as a multimodal facility and therefore it does meet the locational criterias for what they call their bonus intensity zone. So, if they actually met several performance standards, actually more than several, over a dozen or so, they could ask for an increase in their density and intensity. I'll list those in the staff report next month so you understand that potential if the developer wanted to pursue some of those intensity and density bonuses. Staff will be coming back to you on June 10th for our public hearing in the evening to get your recommendation on this plan amendment. And then it's scheduled to be heard by Temple Terrace City Council on July 2nd and the 16th. Being a small scale, we do expect Temple Terrace City Council's action at that meeting on July 16th. And with that, Chairman, I would stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Willman?
Quick question for Mark. Was that site historically office use or was it always residential, do you know?
The actual plan amendment site?
Yeah.
I don't, I could research and find out when the actual apartment complex was originally built, but I suspect it's been there for quite some time and the other lot is actually vacant. But I can prior to that find out when those multifamily units were built.
Yeah, I'm just curious how it was assigned office, future land use originally.
Well, residential, office institutional does allow residential development to a certain scale, nine units per acre, but I'd be happy to research that and have that part of the report.
Okay, Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did I understand you to say earlier, and I don't know if you said this, but that the, one of the main reasons for the amendment was because he wanted, they wanted to increase the density to, on portion of the vacant lot, you said, to build more?
Well, they want to, they want to give a facelift to the existing units and then they want to expand the multifamily uses to the vacant lot to the south. And to get the number of units that they feel is necessary to make the project viable, they could not do that under the nine units per acre that is allowed in the office institutional. So, that's why they're seeking the residential 18.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. We are going to move on to the City of Plant City briefing for 18-07.
Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission Staff. For the city of Plant City, staff is processing two privately initiated plan amendments, PCCPA 1807 and 1901, and both of these have similarities as you'll soon find out. The first, both of these are located in close proximity to each other. The first one is north and south of East Newsome Road, east of Paul Buckman Highway, south of Williams Road and west of North Wilder Road. These are in the northeast quadrant and also part of, or within the northeast Plant City Area Master Plan area. This is a little bit close up of an aerial showing the affected areas surrounded by the dash lavender line. I will say to the north, to the west and to the south, those areas are already within the city of Plant City. All those areas are part of what is known as North Park Isles. That is a residential subdivision that is currently under development within the city of Plant City. It does have a residential six land use category. As I've already mentioned, it's privately initiated. This is being voluntarily annexed into the city. The annexation is pending and going through a concurrent process with this plan amendment. It is a regular scale plan amendment as it is over 100 acres or approximately 107.57 acres. Currently, it has a Hillsborough County Residential 1 land use category and the applicant is asking for Plant City Residential 6. In this map here, you see the bright yellow color that is currently within Plant City and that is North Park Isles. It has a residential six plan category. A little bit further afield in the county also has a residential six. It's another development to the west. The light green color, which is encompassed by this plan amendment, that's the residential one in unincorporated county. To the south is a plan amendment was processed back in 2005 that has a Plant City Residential 4. As I said, that was processed back in 2005. It has since been acquired by North Park Isles and has been brought into their plan development district for future development as part of this subdivision. And this shows you how the map would change based, this was approved by the Plant City Commission, similar to the colors of that residential six, the yellow that is shown for the remainder of North Park Isles. What are the ramifications? As it's Hillsborough County Residential 1, there was a potential there for 107 dwelling units. This would increase sixfold based on the six dwelling units per gross acre that would be allowed by this plan category or up to 645 dwelling units. Staff's analysis will focus on that increase. In either instance, it does not meet locational criterias, so we do not anticipate any type of non-residential development, i.e. commercial or office. The schedule that we're operating under for this particular plan amendment is coming back to you as the previous plan amendment with our recommendation and staff report on June 10th to get your recommendation. We will be making a similar presentation to the Planning Board, Plant City, on June 26th, that's 8:30 in the morning at Plant City City Hall. And as it's a regular plan amendment, we'll be seeking direction from their city commission on July 22nd if they desire us to transmit this to the Department of Economic Opportunity for their comment. With that, Chairman, that concludes my presentation and stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, one, one quick question. Is that Newsome Road, that's the only point of access to this?
The, there is a PD that has been developed for this development, which is being brought into, which is North Park Isles. The actual main, there'll be a spine road, which actually the main entrance will be on Sam Allen Road, which actually is at the very bottom of the map. But there'll be other access points to Newsome Road, Wilder Road. There'll be multiple access points to this overall development. There is a unified PD that is being developed for it and as they bring in these additional areas, they're encompassing that into their roadway system.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Plant City Conference of Plan Amendment 19-01.
Well, this one's going to be a little bit of deja vu because it's very similar in many aspects and others, there are some differences. This one's just located north of the previous one, north of East Newsome Road, east of Paul Buckman Highway, south of Williams Road and west of North Wilder Road, and this is identified as 1901. As you can see, this is the area that's been, that's being affected by this plan amendment. It is again encompassed by the dash lavender line. You can see development pattern out here is predominantly agricultural at the moment in large lots, single-family homes. Again, you can see the area that is potentially being developed and designed for the future residential development of North Park Isles. Again, this is privately initiated. Again, it's related to a voluntary pending annexation into the city of Plant City. This is slightly larger than the previous one at 128 acres, but the request did the same to go from Hillsborough County Residential 1 to Plant City Residential 6. This shows you the map amendment area with the land uses as they stand today. Again, the light green colors of the Hillsborough County Residential 1 and you see the brighter yellow colors of Plant City Residential 6. And of course, the plan amendment that we just spoke of, that's also being entertained to be encompassed by this North Park Isles is just to its south. And this will show you how the map would change based on approval by the Plant City Commission. And this shows an example where this would be served by the spine road that would ultimately go down to North Park Isles, but this area also has access to North Wilder Road. What are the ramifications if approved by Plant City City Commission? Right now, there's entitlements for 120 dwelling units. Again, going from one unit to six units, this would increase sixfold to 769 dwelling units. Again, this one, as the last one, does not have any potential for commercial or office development. And it's on the exact same timeline as the previous one. We'll be coming back to you next month with our recommendation and to get your recommendation for Plant City City Commission. The Planning Board is the same date as well, June 26th, and the city commission, their transmitted public hearing would be July 22nd. Within both these plan amendments, everyone within 250 feet of each are being noticed of all of these dates and encouraging their participation. And with that, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman, and happy to answer any questions.
Next up is our Executive Director's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. At your seat, you should have my report. It looks like I've been very busy, but it's actually been a lot of individual briefings with county commissioners on a couple of topics. It's consumed a lot of these days. First topic that we were addressing with them was the update to the fees, which you all saw at your April meeting. They considered that on May 1st and the motion was to bring back two resolutions to the Board of County Commissioners. One, for 90% of fee recovery, or fees that would cover 90% of our costs. And this was not just for planning commission fees, but also for those applying to development services. The second resolution was the same end result, but with some sort of phasing in of the fees. That should be coming back to the board, I believe, their first meeting in June, for them to consider those two resolutions and decide which way they want to go forward. Then the next item that was to be before the board was a briefing on the population and jobs projections and how we had completed the allocation and hybrid scenario. That was scheduled for May 7th. I got to brief all the commissioners, but unfortunately, their land use agenda ran long on May 7th and so that got postponed, the actual presentation. So, time to be determined when we're going to do that next. Also at your seat is a update from Diane Salz on legislative outcomes. I thought I would highlight a couple of things that were in her report. The distracted driving bill that's highlighted on the first page was one that was advocated strongly for by the Vision Zero Coalition. And so, that was something that was a success for that coalition. We'll see whether or not the governor signs it, but that, it was a success that it got that far at the very least. The next bill, the Hillsborough County Civil Service Act, did abolish the civil service board for Hillsborough County. And that is something that we had utilized because as an agency of our size, we had not opted out of civil service because it was awfully convenient to use their free services. Since we knew this was coming, we have hired a project manager for accountability and employee engagement and Megan Bedd Attorney is already on board with us. She's starting to work on developing our own policies and procedures standalone from civil service because we will not be under them as of October 1st. So, we're thrilled to have her on board and be able to handle a lot of these issues ourselves. I have had a meeting, she and I have, with the Director of Hillsborough County Human Resources because we will need to avail ourselves of some more of their services. They already provide our benefits and a number of other things, but there are some things that it just doesn't make sense for a 50-person agency to do on our own. So, we'll go with the economy of scales with them. And then the last bill I would highlight is at the bottom of page two, it starts a property development and you've probably heard a good bit about HB 7103. I know I've been getting emails on a regular basis from Thousand Friends of Florida about how this will undo all of the growth management provisions. From our standpoint, it does not change anything about the role of a local planning agency, the role of the comprehensive plan. It does change the onus on if a citizen was to challenge a development order or a comprehensive plan amendment, that they, and they did not prevail in the challenge, that they would potentially be on the hook for the attorney's fees associated with that challenge. So, that is not something that we have had of late, a lot of challenges to the comprehensive plan. What Diane and I talked about in relationship to this bill is that, that really it's not something that directly impacts the planning commission, but that certainly we have information that could be helpful to our legislators on this topic about how often this happens to our local governments. And so, that's sort of the role that we were envisioning taking as whether, we'll see whether or not the governor signs the bill and whether or not there's similar legislation or legislation to undo the bill next year. But how we see it, and I wanted to be transparent with all of you, is that we're sort of a resource in terms of information about the plan amendment process and what we're seeing is that we're not having a lot of impact of citizen challenges right now. Okay. Okay, a couple of information items. Just a reminder, I think Sandy sent it out or Sharon did about the boat tour on June 6th. If anybody's interested in participating in that, please RSVP. On June 10th, we'll have a regular meeting and then the public hearing on the three amendments that Mark just outlined. I did want to get some feedback on your July 22nd meeting. So, in July, if we have a meeting, it's on the fourth Monday because the second Monday is awfully close to the fourth of July. So, what was sent out on the calendar was July 22nd. We do have, I think it's three county plan amendments that we could hear in a public hearing that evening. We don't think we have a lot of content for a regular meeting, but it will make your August meeting less painful if we have a public hearing in July. But I wanted to make sure we would have a quorum for a public hearing in July, on July 22nd. And also, I've heard from a couple of planning commissioners in interest in doing a planning commission retreat and... commission retreat, and we could throw out July 22nd, I don't know if all of you have that date, like, reserved on your calendar, and that's an easy one to use for a retreat, or if we need to pull for other days for a retreat after that. So I'm trying to get some sense of, like, is July 22nd? Yeah, like a day retreat, like, we would use maybe the afternoon of the 22nd, instead of having a regular meeting, we could go somewhere and have a retreat for a couple of hours. Okay, I knew there, I thought that was the case.
And I'm going to miss the August meeting, so you can move all of the stuff to August, and I'll be okay.
Okay. Okay.
I think I'm available.
If I know ahead of time that it's a definite date, I can plan around it, but otherwise, I'm probably not going to be here.
Okay. All right, so we'll definitely have a public hearing on the evening on the 22nd. Is everybody okay with an afternoon retreat that day, or would you like me to look for a different date that potentially we could have all the commissioners here for?
Well, it'd probably be more, wouldn't it be more beneficial for the newer commissioners to probably be there, so we'd probably want to have you there. I mean, I just want to have you there, just because I enjoy having you around, you know.
Okay, we will look for, pull for another date for the retreat, so that we can hopefully have everybody there.
Yep.
Great, thank you for that direction. Last thing, this was mentioned earlier, but on Wednesday night, we are having this visioning open house at, with the Ebor City Development Corporation, updating the Ebor City CRA Vision Plan, and so we're excited to be partnering with that, with them on that. There also is a survey online that you can take if you can't go to the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Melissa? Moving on to last item, other business, under chair's business, the only thing I wanted to mention is I'm going to be, I'm not going to be at the June meeting, I'm going to be at Florida Governmental Finance Officers Association meeting, so just wanted to let Jaclyn, Commissioner Wildes, know, give her some advance notice, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So, next up, any old business? Any new business? Committee reports? Are there committee reports? Okay, yep. I did want to mention, we do have a City of Tampa public hearing at 5:30, and, yeah, I'll mention, everybody should have gotten, Commissioner Wildes?
Yes, everyone, everyone should have gotten the copy of the Planning and Design Awards flyer at your desk, if not, let me know, and please place on your calendar Tuesday, October 29th, as a date with the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, any comments or anything before we adjourn? Meeting's adjourned.